Good evening, I'm gonna call the order. This work session agenda of the Dallas Planning Commission, September 12th, it's after seven P M. I'm calling the meeting to order, may we have the roll call, please?
Mary Newell. Rich Spofford here. John Schulte is absent this evening. Cory Banford may arrive later. Carol Kowash is absent, Andy Gro.
Here.
John Swanson.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. We'll move on in our agenda, we have no public hearings tonight, but we have a, a, a very good, uh, lineup, uh, yeah. A good, a good lineup for, for a meeting this evening, I, I thank everybody for, for being here. So, we're gonna go on to the approval of minutes, looks like we got two sets of minutes to approve, we'll do them separately. Uh, there's the regular meeting of August the eighth, two thousand twenty-three. I've looked them over. I assume everyone else says as well, uh, are there any corrections, additions? Or, uh, may we have, uh, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, moved and seconded on approval minutes of the August the eighth regular meeting. And that was a public hearing, so I wanna do them separately. Uh, let's just do a, a voice vote, all those, uh, in favor of approving the minutes of August the eighth, say aye?
Aye.
Close the same? Passes unanimously. Uh, now we have the approval of the minutes of the work session meeting, which are pretty short, uh, on August the thirtieth, that was great, thank you Wayne.
My pleasure.
Uh, it wa- it was really informative, and I think that, uh, we all, those of us that have been down this road before, and those of us that are a little more new, got a lot out of that, so, we've looked it over, or i- can I entertain, uh, a motion for approval of the work session meeting on August thirtieth? Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded, let's have a voice vote, all those, uh, in, in agreement? Vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose the same? We move on. Agenda item number four, public comment. This is an opportunity for those that may be attendants in the meeting, uh, that have something to say, or would like to make testimony before the planning commission on something that is not on our agenda this evening. Uh, it, first of all, it's, I'll, I'll ask Ben, is there anybody on the phone?
No.
There's no one on the phone, so is there anyone present that would like to? You, you knew I was looking at you. It's a public comment, so, uh, I, I think our, a lot of time is three minutes, but you know, take as much time as you need, and, uh, start with your name and your address for the record.
Alright, uh, I'm Devin Jones, uh, my address is sixteen oh five Southeast Barberry, also, uh, uh, seven four five Harvest Cross. My wife and I own Harvest Cross.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, uh, uh, I'm here to propose, uh, suggestions on amending the sign code. Um, uh, I know that recently, well, first of all, I'll talk about our, our situation. Um, in the sign code, I don't know if you're familiar with it at all, uh, there is, uh, uh, regulations on how much of a, a window can be covered up by a sign, and right now it's, uh, it's fifty percent. Um, and I'm sure that when some, the, the code is written, that serves some sort of a purpose. Um, but right now, uh, there's, there's plenty of businesses that have windows that are covered by more than fifty percent. Uh, it's, uh, it's serving a purpose in those businesses, um, and, uh, in, and really, it hasn't become much of an issue, there haven't been many complaints, things like that. Um, also, uh, just comparing that to another sign issue, uh, similarly, uh, we have many, uh, uh, sandwich boards around town. Sure. Uh, I'm sure all, uh, the provisions on those, but, uh, uh, as I, far as I know, that, uh, we're in the process of possibly amending to allow for those. But, for the same reason, um, a lot of people are doing it, they haven't become a, a, you know, a public safety concern, and, uh, and they're really kind of passing the scrutiny of, of, of public perception.
Excuse me, what did, what did you say, I didn't catch what you said.
Sign boards.
Sandwich boards.
They're the folding ones.
Got it, okay, I, I just, you spoke fast and I didn't hear what it was.
Yeah.
Thing, I wanted to know what you were talking about, so go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I just think it was to consider that same process, um, uh, to, to make amendments to allow for businesses to cover, um, as, as much. Um, uh, window frontage, uh, serves multiple purposes, one is to provide privacy for the people. Some businesses, uh, it's just not, uh, the best thing for people to be walking by and looking inside their, their windows. Other, other businesses, it should be open, right, that, it serves their business to have people looking inside and things like that. Uh, not so for all the businesses. Um, uh, like I said, at one point, uh, probably served a great purpose. Uh, but right now, in our, uh, you know, current, current way that many businesses are doing business, uh, it just might benefit them better to not have those provisions, those regulations, so, uh, anyways, that's, uh, pretty much all I had to say.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
It's on the record, and, you know, I assume that you've been speaking with staff on this issue?
Yeah, I, I, we've had a couple of meetings, um, been talking to, you know, several different people, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, I'm optimistic.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in, appreciate you, uh, participating in the process.
Thanks.
Any other public comments, I don't see any other, well, we're all members of the public, but I don't see anybody that's not, uh, uh, here for official business, so, we will go on to agenda item number five, um, which is staff updates, and we will start off on an update from staff on the Lockreel Node Master Plan update. Hi Charlie.
Planning Commission. Um, updates.
Something really short. Much more in depth, uh, presentation of a work session next month.
Will that be at the regular meeting next month?
It depends.
Okay.
And recently, well, publicly, we, we're waiting to see what will be on the agenda, see what work this stuff.
Sure.
Uh, but it's, uh, maybe six days will be, they work that we don't have, or if part of the regular meeting at seven, or whether we do it at eleven, six, or we do it at night. Uh, likely going to depend on what all is on that.
Got it, and that's the October tenth meeting, right? Okay. Well, I've, not to inter- interrupt your, your presentation, I've already let staff know, I'm gonna be out of the country, uh, until that day, I'm like literally coming home on October the tenth, and I won't be here in time for the meeting, so, uh, that's fine, I appreciate that, uh, uh, and so, carry on without me, but if I have any questions or whatever, I'll reach out to you separately, and maybe we could, you know, get together, talk on the phone or something, so, yeah.
Well, that'd be just a work session, you said, not an hearing. Yeah. Okay. Alright, so.
You can see them on. Spans the note though. Uh, year two thousand, I believe, or?
Uh, when they did the planning work for it, uh, two thousand might have been.
That was, I think, was the adoption, so it's, so it's been sitting around for, you know, a quarter century with not much happening.
I mean, assuming the rest is low density residential, because ninety and seventy-three don't add up. Okay.
What's happened so far was just.
Does that include the, uh, uh, annexation?
Um.
I see.
And, and so that's another topic for this special, exactly, that we don't have.
So that's not gonna be part of what happens on, uh, yeah, the fourteenth and the twentieth, that was. The new plan. Got it, got it. Got it. Sure I do.
They're really already dismissed by the advisory committee, so this is the one we're kind of moving forward. Um, and you asked about kind of what's left over, if we've already accounted for the commercial and the higher density. Um, and that's probably the, um, if we get the, the bright yellow is is median density, so you know, there is actually no low density left in the node that gets being proposed. Um, and the blue is a proposed new zoning designation, which would be mixed use. Um, and obviously, that's again, part of that next phase, which actually, uh, delineates what that zoning designation even means and what it is, because we don't have that zone currently on our book, so it'd be entirely without classification. And then the purple off to the, to the southeast, that's the, that's the, the Barbary node, so it runs up in conjunction with the Barbary node. Um, if you look really closely, you can kind of see, um, one of them now, there's currently a ton of that. Standard, wasn't? Notably, the Hawthorne area, because that area is going to get directly impacted first, uh, as the infrastructure gets developed, and the sewer heads north through that neighborhood, and some of them. So, some of the. Um, and maybe it extended it all the way out to the U G B, so it just kind of made sense and to, to, to include those other areas that were immediately adjacent to the node. Um, then this one is kind of show some of the connectivity, uh, uh, concepts of how the node would interact with the rest of the community in that area. Uh, and again, this is all really just future development proposed, um, I don't know how much of this will actually get into uh, the plan itself, but it's trying to show a relational perspective, so that it's not just living by itself. Uh, happy to. You know, invite you to kind of continue on to that next phase, which will be adoption in November.
Okay. Any questions from planning commissioners?
Oh no, I'm always last.
I'm always.
I'm always second to last.
Serious, um, because I probably know I've been involved, it's not, you know, all detailed, but so is this like total county land, city land, uh, the, the red especially, or is it? Normal.
So it's a bit of a bowl, um, what's the market at the end? Yeah, are you asking which jurisdiction or who of ownership? So none of this is publicly owned, uh, it's all privately owned, actually, there's a bunch of parcels in this, in.
Which is part of the.
The complexity of, of.
Is there a slide uh, that shows, uh, the area that's inside the current city limits and the areas that are outside of the city limits, but inside the urban growth boundary?
Yes, first slide.
Yeah.
Okay. Walk us through that, because.
So, although the white area is outside of the city limits.
I see.
The, the bath green line is the U G B. And so all of that white area is currently in the county, outside the city limits. But it included in the proposed zone boundary.
Sure, so how much of the Lockreel node is already inside the city limits, just the area to the west there?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Just, mostly that yellow area on the, on the west side there.
So a majority of this work is occurring outside of the city limits, and, but inside the urban growth boundary?
Right, it's all.
Right.
But of course, before it gets developed, according to the master plan, it would be, it would be handled.
Sure, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
It depends on the, well, there isn't a case, there is a P.
It, it depends on the specific circumstances, um.
We can initiate.
Has a big part of it. I, so it was, that was definitely, so.
Yeah. Those have lots of question. You know, a problem. Um, you know, some are in favor of it, some aren't, which is, is expected, because some are seeing beyond the lifespan of their current situation, and, you know, like, more than likely, um, this will cause property value to go up and make land more valuable. Um, but if you're happy and hunky dory and you're one acre, you know, semi-rural residential lot, then that doesn't mean anything to you, so this depends on, um, the situation that you're in, and how far in the future you really want to go. You know, that's a good question, that actually did come up in the open house, you know, that's a, that's a, a political decision that the council would have to make. My understanding that this council hasn't had much of a history of that, uh.
No, and of course, every domain means the city is buying the property or simply. Huh? Or simply, yeah, forcibly, and we have problems with that, we can't, and we can't exercise eminent domain and then turn over a piece of property to be developed by a private developer. So. Oh, yes, theoretically, but, uh, yeah, politically speaking, I don't see a Dallas City Council exercising any domain. Right, right, yeah. Sure.
Typically, you don't have a road meeting go in until somebody who owns the land wants to put a subdivision there, so that's moot point.
Correct.
Unless it's part of the transportation system that you want to open up an area.
Okay. Question, Andy?
Um, you said the mixed use is not currently a zoning code?
Correct, we don't have that designation.
How can we approve a plan with a classification for a zoning code that doesn't exist?
Well, again, that's
Conceivably, we could approve the plan, and then whatever happens in that zoning code doesn't come to be, and now we've got a plan that is inconsistent with reality. How does that hap- how, are you uncomfortable with that, I guess?
I, I'm, well, not really, because it's ironic. So, we've, uh, we've been moving it that way for the last twenty-five years.
The planning commission.
That's all it's time. Some inconsistency.
I, I, I think the expectation is that if the commission and council approve the plan with a designated area for mixed use, that they will likely approve the legislative changes to create that, so if they don't, you're right, then we have a disconnect, and we'd have to bring the plan back to amend it, because that zone doesn't exist.
Sure, is, is, I guess, is the mixed use of a popular new kind of zoning classification, or is this something that you guys have just made up? They use it. Yeah, it's not really, no, it's basically downtown, not downtown, so we have a mixed use downtown here, it's, uh,
Right.
Mixed uses along major corridors, we could potentially have like a residential structure with commercial and offices, you know, kinds of things, okay?
Apartments upstairs from retail or commercial on lower.
On leaves, okay, now I am, that makes more sense.
And I think that's an excellent question, next month for the consultant, because I would make a strong assumption that new, uh, a new zoning designation built into the development, uh, code would be part of this, this process.
Okay. Yeah.
No filter was finally about the mixed use zone, then, you know, we would probably have to dig it out. Um, the nice thing is, uh, the general commercials zone, as it's currently written, provides a certain level of mixed use already, so uh, there is that to fall back on. Um, and so we, we need to really define what we mean by mixed use zone, how it differs from the C B D or the general commercial zone. More than likely, what it would establish is some threshold of, of ratios and percentages of development in different types, it would be my guess, and I don't know your experience with that, Cory.
Well, so we're saying on things, a lot of it along, it sounds like they have different factors, mixed use. Again, what, they're used on, so it has different densities depending on location. So. If you're, if you're not, but, yeah, that is usually, uh, yeah, it varies, you know, what you want to see, I find, the mix.
There are models out there, we're not forgetting yet.
Right, we're not inventing those here.
Okay, thank you, this is probably way too much time to spend on the question, but go ahead, thank you for your help.
Anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Well, it does address the, uh, higher density housing, you know, we have a deficit amount.
Right, and this is along, uh, Ellendale, if I remember where it goes. So I imagine we're gonna have to answer the question of how many stories is gonna be allowed in this, right?
Well, except for the mixed use zone for, everything else that can form the works.
Right, but in the mixed, mixed use zone, that's gonna be part of the discussion, okay? Okay.
Excellent.
Did you have any questions?
Uh, just one, um, you mentioned Hawthorne Avenue there, and its intersection with Ellendale, and it's its address to the property, the city property that's to the south there, I believe that wasn't that long ago, we approved uh, uh, a residential development there that, that presented a stopgap sort of, uh, uh, of approval that allowed emergency access on Hawthorne Avenue into that area of the city that was proposed for development. So you mentioned sewer, I just want to make sure that transportation and uh, how Hawthorne addresses Ellendale Avenue is gonna, is being addressed by the consultants and the, and the planning work that's going on.
So, you know, the T S P currently calls for it to be extended, you can see that.
Yeah, I mean, extended to the south so that it it. Yeah, in, in, into academy down into that neighborhood to the south, so I assume that that, I mean, that's been that's been sort of a or not, yeah, but I'm just saying that, that's been an issue with that neighborhood for, for a long, long time, it's like making that is, when, when, when they built those one acre rural residential lots on Hawthorne Avenue, they never imagined that the city would eventually surround them, and now here we are in the situation of having to deal with big lots. Oh, excellent. Excellent. Okay. Well, obviously, the, the city has, uh, engaged with consultants and, uh, technical advisory committee, so we don't want to belabor any of this, so you whetted our appetite for what we will see next month.
I have one more question, I'll go down. So, with the, seemed like a pretty tight timeline to get through the process, how does that incorporate the potential transportation system plan was mentioned? There's an update to that, because there's some room in there, or is, are there anticipated changes or updates that will reflect what the T S P update might include?
That's a great question, and that's a part of this to take our time a little bit with that next phase, do they want to get? We're sort of just now being related to T S P, this, this, I think. It's always been so, we don't have an idea or, so like anticipating of the next three to six months. So, the most important project, it's just.
Yeah, chicken or the egg, it's like, do we want to figure out the transportation before we figure out new planning, or vice, or let the planning drive the transportation?
Right, there was the long range transportation system plan that's reflected in this, so, yeah, I, I think it's consistent with comprehensive planning, but then it's just a matter of incorporating what they're doing about it.
Yeah, like you said, you know, we, we may want to kind of break some a little bit from the next phase.
Next phase. Approving of it. Yeah, right, right.
So to clarify, the upcoming approval is to. Um, accepting the, the plan by resolution. And then initiate the comprehensive plan development code updates as a follow-on process. So then implement the concept plan that was adopted. With the actual land use action follows after the concept plan.
So, so this is the picture and then the approval turns it into law and this specific regulation.
The resolution approving the plan doesn't bind, uh, what you do legislatively.
So we speak so like a second.
When we actually have to make it consistent with the transportation system planning every home. And hopefully the main bones of the transportation system plan are not gonna be changed with this new one, but you never know.
So when it comes to November and we're looking at having a public hearing and the opportunity to actual, actually make a decision on this. Are we talking about a master plan or an area plan? And the reason I ask that is because. There's a lot of property owners there that have a lot of different interests and getting them all on one page is, is, is difficult. So. My question is, will we be considering in November a master plan or an area plan approval? Well, an area plan is generally in. In, in my understanding is that an area plan is a concept and a master plan means that a majority. Of the property owners inside of the planning area are on board with what's being proposed. So that might be.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever codified that as a concept. It's, uh, uh, this, I think what this would be, you've described as an area.
Right.
There's, yeah, we described that. Okay. No intention, no, no intention here that there will be a, we're not changing anyone's zoning, we're not. Touching anyone's property other than this going on lines on a map.
Right, because we're not doing anything legislatively.
Maybe coming.
Right. Usually that occurs when annexation occurs is when you've gotta put it in ink. And we're not saying, you know, thirty percent commercial here, twenty percent industrial there, ten, you know. Those blobs on the map can be moved around, but when you actually get to annexing it and. Applying specific zoning designations to specific properties is kinda where the rubber meets the road, but we're in process.
But once we put it in the comp plan, then if somebody wants to do something different than what's in the comp plan, then they have to come to us to change it.
It's an incremental process.
Yes.
Okay, well, I think we beat the heck out of that one. So thank you very much. Are there any other questions on, on Lock Real Node? And I'm very sorry that I'm gonna miss the next meeting, uh, but I will.
Just told me.
I will make sure, I will make sure that I am caught up by the time we, uh, are asked to make, uh. To consider a decision, uh, in November. Thanks.
You can buy me coffee in the zone at the bakery.
Sure, okay. I think I'm gonna be like. At the time, so. Okay, so moving on to the next staff update, uh, staff update item B Mercer Reservoir.
Yay.
No, no water. Future, alright. So a little bit of history on Mercer Reservoir. Week, actually Lock Rock Creek at the time and a few other, uh, adjacent, uh, so streams out there back in nineteen oh three. Um, the dam itself, uh, we got water rates in the storage in the late fifties. It finished construction in actually sixty one, but siding in fifty nine. Um, that proved, uh, worked for a while, then we needed to raise it in the seventies. Um, so we raised it up, some of the acre feet, you know, storage that we have here. Um, that. Uh, you know, about two thousand, we, we did some surveying in the, the nineteen eighties, discovered. To the top of our skull, I give this.
You know, sure, uneasy on if we're gonna make it all the way to next rainy season. So we know we need to expand where we're soon. Um, our plan is to have a reservoir that's about five thousand acre feet. Um, then that could rather than about three percent, more over three percent of the volume. Significant more water. That capacity of reservoir will give us. When we're looking at different options for reservoir, we put on channel, off channel. Do we do a single site? We do a second site, keep the existing reservoir in place. A lot of options we'll look at. Um, we did a theme, we need a single reservoir site, just downstream of the existing, uh, dam. So. Uh, have a lot of reasons why, um, land ownership from it, we are in own a lot of land, uh, we. You know, allow that water to fill our capacity. And then also with the, you know, simplify kind of pitch package because we already know what we have to go through there. If you can continue, keep the process where you have, you don't have to, you have two sites, you have two different passes. Um, we do know that it had a predicate case in here. You know, good and know that you start going off to the right. You, you don't know what you're gonna deal with, so we know isn't that fair? Um, plus by doing a on-channel, single, um, site right there, it's going to be actually a lower top. The benefits of having a wide reservoir, you want to be sure you're wanting in the future. Having always pitching a water for. Voluntary use, keeping lower, the three factors. Lower the temperature with the second. Born about seventy years old now. Um, but they did throw those in there. You know, we know that you probably able to handle a pretty decent site if you're bad, so we wanna make sure. And also, uh, let it fight, this is the original. So there's some, you know, wear and tear on something that's that old. So the next steps. We have already submitted our application for storage water runs. So we already got that turned in. You hear about your process because it always do like. Uh, we also have an adjustment. Right now, most of the fans on, so we have these.
Like, where's that?
Yeah. So we, uh, we, we have, you know, upstream and downstream. We've been on this a while. We have this project that, uh. How would you say, you just try four of the valves inside of the. Right now, they go over fifteen feet in the concrete instead of the natural. You know that when you build a dam, some doubts that was actually really guilty for it for the monitoring, so we provide quality for it. And then the process in good place. Um, another thing we have come up and seen is the flooding, the flood and invasion stuff. What that does if it looks at downstream of any high acid dam. You have. If there happens to be some catastrophic failure or misoperation. Um, we're going to try to work with whatever consultants or to do that, to maybe work in some. There's lots of permitting that's gonna have to happen, a lot of public outreach. What, um, in that capacity for the reservoir, how much is still being rendered? There'd be a lot of. And if you look at what I need to say about, as they, well, so you know that, you know, we're serving commercial. So they didn't look at the, whether it's your current usage. Use that to kind of get to the, the. You know, we didn't just assume just a certain number.
Recycled water project in place for a sewer plant. So we'll get recovery there. That'll help supplement things for industry or irrigation, stuff like that.
Any other question? Alright. No? Engineer, Jatory?
So, um, is the new dam anticipated to be concrete? Or is that a question to be answered when design happens? You said you looked at the seismic capability of where you wanna locate your dam. Is that based on concrete dam or?
No, it would be looking so to earth and, and, yeah. I mean, the seismic resiliency of an earth and dam is, they're, they're great. I mean, you, as soon as you go to a rigid, you know, structure, you can get cracking and stuff like that. Uh, in fact, a lot of the dams down in California area are earth and dams because they're very seismic. Uh, you know, seismic zones down there. So sure, you know, earth and dams are, as long as you build them with the right core on the right, you know. Sure. Bedrock, you don't have the liquefaction of the core where that's where you get in trouble.
Sure, yeah, sounds good. Um, I assume it'll have fish passage or fish ladder or something? You talked about something spilling over into a wall and.
We'll be, um, more than likely doing similar for downstream passage, like to allow them to pass on their own downstream. We'll probably still be doing a trap and haul type of program for upstream. Right now, just the estimates that they put together when they were doing the comparisons, if we were to do. Um, like with a, a trap and haul type of program during the, the, the season that needs it. Um, we're looking around, the estimates were around sixty million in change or so for, for, for the new dam at this location. If we were to do year, year round. If we were to do year year round upstream downstream fist passage, that same. Um at that some location, it would jump to about a hundred and seventy million.
And that sixty million is life of the dam. Idea or?
What's that?
The sixty million is an estimate for the life.
Um I believe it's more that's the, it's the construction of the dam. I mean, there's not a lot, I mean, there's, there's really not a lot of operational cost with the dam we have right now.
Right, but a trap and haul, you've got to have. Yeah. And people and all that other.
And usually trap and hauls, I mean, yeah, they're they're right now, it's done by the sportsman club. So the city does not actually, yeah, the city does not pay for the current trap and.
And beat that.
Program, so yeah, so there's groups that are out there to do that and stuff like that.
And that's ODFW is approving of that. That idea for for having that.
Yeah, they've been doing Coho since about two thousand, I think, and the numbers just keep going up.
Okay, so last question, is the old dam get removed when the new dam gets built?
Yeah, there'll be a major chunk of it would be breached. You know, obviously we take the spillway out. That's the easiest part to do it is reached to the spillway. We would need to cut it down, you know, a substantial amount so that you have flow if it gets down to that. Though otherwise you're creating an internal check down already. Um but yeah, once, once the new dam would be. Come operational and be downs from the other one, we'd probably start looking at breaching parts of the other dam and then try to. Take it out.
Cool, thank you. That was a very good presentation.
So you mentioned over time uh with fires and for day runoff uh seven. And absorbing a lot of your capacity. As you plan for the futures, or something that can be done or dealt with?
Yeah, you can actually build structures on the upstream part of of the reservoir that are kind of like a gravel trap or something like that. So where it um it's purpose. Obviously, large. And the fines are going to float down and then settle. But um you can, you can do gravel traps and that will, which will get some of the bulkier stuff and and um. And then actually, if you build it right, you build this gravel trap where you can remove it and then take it downstream and place it downstream. So you're mimicking what the stream would have been doing without the dam there. Like all of these, you know, gravels, you travel downstream, they would help with. You know, fish passage or fish rearing, you know, uh downstream of the dam. Right now, it's pretty barren because everything collects. Your your big pool of water. Gravels on the upstream side side. Transport them around occasionally and let them kind of filter their way down, then I'll help. It keeps stuff out and.
And it was, it was in the eighties um. There's the Rock Creek Fire.
Yeah.
That that really led to a lot of that sulpication. Uh it was a major forest fire up in you in the watershed. And it just opened the reservoir to a lot of that runoff. It occurred in almost, you know, catastrophically, you know, over a couple of year period that there were a lot of havoc. And also uh within what about seven or eight years ago? We purchased several hundred acres of uh of the forest land. Uh around the uh reservoir. To control logging activities. Again, for purpose, possibly revenue, but also to mitigate. Well, from logging activity. So there, there's been a strategy about that for some time. Yeah. I don't know. There were anything now. There's no past. Fire that we was probably. You know, no way.
Free measures keep silk from coming down, watching down until and underbath.
That was the.
Oh, it burned.
West side of the hill.
Yeah, well, they burned every, they burned everything up.
Which opens up to the door there. Is that somebody that continue in the beginning now? Or whether we. Or not, or they're not giving you the problem.
Um so.
We do, you know, that it's not the city. We don't actually have to do it. That's them by. And of course, man. A lot of private. The timber hurts. So that is people.
By not us.
Yeah. By now. Do you not worry to see the though that you. Those and you're on the rest of the order. Need to protect the waters and even I think so. It was reacting to the. I'm saying there you go. And we did, they had it to the hockey. Has some, has some. Or basically they're going to kind of.
They're probably, you know, I mean, probably still.
That's derived from my fire danger.
Yeah.
About private property protection.
They actually.
If you go up.
And let's. Do the fire danger, you actually do put signs. Well, access. And. Right about.
But that's in the existing road will be flooded. When you jam happens, so we will be.
You know.
Are there an estimate for the cost we drove ballpark yet?
Well, it was a day, that was at seventy million. Yeah, that was, that was for, you know, the dam and, you know, road relocation and.
These gravel sediment traps and things like that, or is that part of it?
Uh we'd have, I mean, it was a thirty thousand foot number.
Got it.
Let's talk about another thirty thousand foot question without setting a ribbon cutting date. When you, we, when do you estimate uh the new dam will be constructed?
Hmm. That's, you'd need a crystal ball for.
Two to five?
Uh I'd say probably you're pushing the, yeah, I'd say the five year mark, you know, somewhere in that it, yeah, five.
That's fair. I didn't put you on the spot.
Well, it's just, I mean, you got to rely on. A lot and then funding too. I mean, we, we still got to fund this.
How much kind of reception are we getting from uh environmental or any other water watch organizations?
Water Watch was invited to the open house. The water rights application wants to happen. From, from, you know, coming down as like a, you know, public notice type thing from the state agency. So we hosted a stakeholder meeting, invited. The alphabet soup of government agencies, um Water Watch, couple other environmental groups, um news outlets. Every elected official, you know, at every level um to come. And um is pretty decent um um the. Statesman Journal butchered the article, but I mean, they, their, their facts were way off. So if you want facts on on the reservoir, go to our website and. Don't read the statesman.
What are you going to ask is as far as timing goes? In a lot of these cases, litigation. Sure. Time sucks, uh so you don't know who's lining up uh and and weather that.
We, we really went on the how.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
You know, it, it's a, it's a, it's a win, win, win. I mean, all around, so. Yeah.
Right, uh. But any other questions?
I got, I got a couple more just to follow up, Tom. Thank you. This is, this is an excellent topic for us to be discussing right now. Uh I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but I. Get a lot of questions, comments from the public uh. About. Our water use in, and I get asked this question a lot. It's, is there enough water right now? To accommodate the developments occurring in Dallas? I know the answer is yes, but how would you answer that question?
I'd say yes.
And with a, with a, with a, with a five year forecast for uh new capacity. We're well within our ability to continue to develop Dallas uh at its. Current rate without any fear that we're running out of water. And yeah, and and water is on everyone's mind.
It is.
There's drought, there's climate change. A lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on and there's a lot of misinformation flying around out there. So I want to be able to answer this question with authority uh that says we do have the water that we need to sustain. Our current situation and future development until such time that we can make a. A good plan to to increase capacity, right?
Yeah, so we've got um. We have more capacity in our um treatment plant. I mean, so we could actually.
That's another.
So we do have, we do have more capacity in our treatment plant. Um we have a finished water reservoir. Um a project in our C I P that's up on James Town Road, the land that we purchased up there. Um now granted, you still need the supply of water in order to make the water, but um. We, if you do curtailments, if you do things or fixes where you don't lose the water, stuff like that. You don't need to make as much. So right now, we have a Clay Street Reservoir is going to be going um in, you know, we have a contract with a. Um Layfield, they're, they're going to do new covers on the Clay Street Reservoir. Part of that is the South Square Reservoir up on Clay Street is leaking at about a hundred thousand gallons a day. So um we're, we're losing water there. So as soon as we peel that one off in about a month and a half, we'll have an additional hundred thousand dollars or a hundred thousand gallons a day. Um so I mean, that's, that's adds up to a lot of homes there as well. So I mean, there are fixes that can be done, you know, we do things like, you know, upgrades to the irrigation in the park. That, you know, that's, you know, fixes there and and then we shut down our irrigation in the park if we think that we're getting close. Or might get close. And so, yeah, there's a lot of stuff like that that can, that can happen. And we also have a recycled water project that is essentially shelf ready. Um it was in placeful when uh Mint Valley was coming or.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Mint Valley was uh going to be coming to town. They wanted to use recycled water. So it makes about one point one gallons of recycled water that could be put back into in this area. For irrigation use, stuff like that.
You say there's a section on the city website about the. Water capacity improvement increase plan.
So, yeah, if we, if you go to the Public Works um page, when you go underwater, there's a one in there for Mercer Reservoir. Um what we did is it was kind of in response to the Statesman Journal article that had a lot of misinformation in it.
I think that were a lot of these.
Yeah, yeah. So we um we didn't basically say, you know, the, the guy was, you know. Wrong, here's the right answers, but we basically gave the right answers. Let's two hypothetical questions that would, would come from that, so yeah.
Excellent.
You said there is additional capacity in the treatment plant. Is there enough capacity in the treatment plant that when the reservoir is built? We can actually take advantage of all that water?
No, we also have in the, our treatment plant is um built. With expandability in mind, so we have um it's typically a footprint ready for another contact basin and footprint ready for transitional filters. So we're going to start looking at timing on that. And we need to get those filters put in place. If we can get the filters in place and maybe do some dialing, you know, like messing around with them with our chemicals or the filter media. We get our like backwash cycle, they run, I'm going to filter straight, you know, stretch out longer, stuff like that and. You get more capacity out.
So we have sufficient capacity in the treatment plant. For current and the next, say, five years.
Yeah, the boilerplate number on it is about eight million gallons a day um during the heat of the summer. We're doing about five and a half.
Okay, so we got. That's an extra thirty percent.
Yeah.
We're, we're fine.
Well, making the assumption of the planning commission is not going to have any role in the approval or construction of the. Of the new reservoir, since it's outside of the city limits uh. Thank you very much and I, and I would appreciate as. Good news comes along as we advance along this, that, that staff will keep us updated on where we're at. Because like I said. Hotter summers than we've ever had before, higher levels of drought, more fires. Water's a concern that people have and it's something that I think that we all hear about as members of the community. And to be able to give good information rather than say, I'm not sure, I think so. That be able to steer folks to correct information. So thank you very much, Tom. Yeah, for this presentation. Are there any other questions? Any more damn questions?
I would just like to say that if you let Chase know so he can let us know and we don't have to say call Tom.
That's it.
Oh, he's sitting back there.
That's it. Thanks, Tom. Okay, moving on. Now we're going to have an update on the T S P.
Suppose that's me.
Time to wake up?
Yeah. I dropped it to the root, so it's fine.
So. Patient system. So um as we've mentioned, we are in the process of uh. Getting ready for an update. Um we've got the, the consultant uh, but we don't have funding, so the uh project is still probably sick. Solid.
So it's, it's part of the documents uh. It's been a couple of times. Uh wasn't. So. So it's uh. People like. You would talk a lot about. It's a same difference.
Thousand eight.
Right.
Like uh. Other finding documents.
And the. A lot of relationships and preamble of how does this fit in there? Or class.
First call got me. Of course, uh. We don't believe in staying. And so as you.
This is kind of.
Makes our um. Plan for that. Uh so on the spot. Yeah. Yeah, the black and yellow lines, uh so that's. On the hill that was something. It's on the hill. Think that was right away. They're new. Uh earlier on. Makes their parts, their little street. Uh they're in the line. Uh the minorized rules too. Their own one. Major collector. It's that kind of more. So it's by a dog. It's previous. So it's. The dark country. Would be for example, down in East, South, East and West Philly area, the extension of. For the left avenue.
Through with. Wait, I'm. And. And. You. On the cutoff, cloud corner. Street again. Of this is looking at how do we, as the city grows, provide that additional connectivity? So we're relieving choke points before they can develop. Another example being the connection um over by the Arbor. Another example being the connection um over by the Arbor Rhythm where there's the bridge connecting River Drive and Mill Street, uh providing a a more western bridge across the. Um same kind of thing as we have in the southwest area and extension along Ash Creek. Um connecting the two halves of town there as well as some additional connectivity north of Bridlewood as that area develops. So these are all new streets that are proposed. Um obviously have not been built yet, but as development activities in those area occur, um something that the development code would refer to when developers are looking at, hey, where do we build streets? How wide do we build them? What sort of standard do we build them to? Um where do those streets need to go as we're building our subdivisions? This is kind of the guidance, the map that that guides that. Um and so you can see again, we talked previously with the Lockreall node, we have that same um kind of layout shown here that was shown in that initial, you know, uh pre-existing condition section that Charlie was talking about where Hawthorne Avenue curves around and.
We can fix that and translate the plan next.
Well, in many ways, this right here is one of the most valuable aspects of the two thousand nine. Because it does set that thirty foot. Uh this story, uh streetwoods in Dallas have been thirty six feet curved curve, um which is both more hazardous from traffic safety standpoint, it should have more space for vehicles to travel more quickly. It's also a more expensive thing for developers to have bill their by raising the price of housing. It's expensive. Be wider streets. So um in terms of good things in our system T S P, uh this all the graphics to care of. The actual numbers show in terms of highlights of them.
And that includes parking on both sides, doesn't it?
Yes, so this would.
And curb tight sidewalks on all of the streets.
Well, so the T S P shows graphic is for tight sidewalks. Rules by which development is actually built doesn't actually go into that level of specifics.
It was a loaded question. I guess that's why I asked. So curb to curb thirty feet, how how wide is that right away?
There are um in this T S P, so there's an alternative standard in areas where there's no need for us. When that would apply, uh as well as a wider standard in areas where it's still a local access street, but a higher volume of traffic is anticipated such as high density residential areas, commercial areas, things that aren't major throughways, but would still have a higher volume. So, but for your standard, you're gonna speak fifty foot right away. The T S P also, in addition to the also has functional classifications and post classifications for our actual existing uh network through the major collectors and our tools. Uh and then future improvements as as that network is built out. It did go into the level of identifying specific local streets and talk about how there's additional study required for building inside lockouts, local streets, but for the major roadway network. Where there's deficiencies and future improvements posed. Uh this also includes the original Creed trail, uh which is the orange line that runs through the center of the which does include several uh key improvements, notably um of the Escrea Bridge across the U Globe, uh which hasn't yet been built. Uh so there were some major projects applied in this T S P that have been built since the and also the bicycle. Uh so it showed sustained bike lanes have shorter bikeways, assigned bicycle routes. Uh those come out future bicycle improvements, uh including the teal color that I drafted on the So as the roads are built. So, uh yeah, that's kind of the the core of what the system T S P calls for in terms of what. Um because each of these projects is kind of called out graphically, it's also called out, there are these numbers correspond to different project lists. Uh those lists are important because based on based on the T S P planning, um a dollar cost is estimated of, you know, of all these projects, what these visual projects expected to cost, you put all those projects together and you say, hey, our plan for the next twenty years of transportation, it's gonna cost us this many millions of dollars. Uh and then as we're doing our system development charges, that these were charging developers as they do development. Uh we can say, hey, that we won't be to invest in the city's infrastructure over the next twenty years. And so your proportion share of that cost would be some number. Uh and so having something on the master plan is important financially to be able to accommodate into that planning process. Uh important side note, uh the Rickell Creek Trail, although everyone loves it and it's this great project and it's kind of expensive. Uh and it's shown on T S P maps. It's not included in the system development charge list for transportation. Uh and it's also shown on the maps, not anything to the parts master plan, but isn't included on the list of parts projects. So we have this multi-billion dollar, multi-tagage law construction project. That's not being funded. So as you look From this, I'm gonna jump into a little bit of a slide presentation. Uh a lot of this T S P that we have currently is very bottom of the old order, which is not not surprising. A lot of our demand for travel is mobile based. Um looking at trends overall is kind of one of the things we do as planners. Uh so twenty twenty three, the average driving is forty eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Um for your Gen C folks who are starting their careers, um their annual pre cap salary is thirty two thousand five hundred. So um it's sometimes very typical opposed to a four. So building the entire transmission network around automobiles is problematic financially, it's also the ongoing maintenance costs of maintaining all those places. There's the climate costs of fuel. Uh but there's definitely some trends or saying, hey, maybe we should be a little less I think being able to sign to a place to accompany all users, but we live in a So, you know, you got your children, it's not a bad life. Should maybe on the road like this, you could Carol and Donald say, hey, you know, bicycle hire, you're good luck. Are you more comfortable having your children maybe be in a bike lane on the side of the road that's generally where they are? Are those open anytime or or, you know, should our bicycles, so it is be physically separated from the traffic that are protected um more while on the sidewalk kind of area. Uh and then more usable for uh not just your one area, you know, close to your bike needs to work or grocery store where you could also pay your other groups. Uh so I think that there's definitely a lot of more Well, it's kind of like, you know, both sides separately, bicycle paths, they feel very European and
Vancouver, Canada.
Uh so All of us extending my
Granted.
The Astro standards, they're great for state highways, it was made by their specific Uh but our neighborhoods, we're not seeing highways, we do see highway So uh being one of that sort of separating these factors, attractive access on a system roadway is without. That's kind of additional endings box I have. Speed. I'm sure you all have your own.
Uh and before we open it up to questions, just what's our timeline for the update on the T S P?
Right, so it sounds like we're still probably at least six months out from the
Technical Advisory Committee. Have they been appointed yet? The T A C? I see. I see. Okay, thank you. And we're waiting. We don't have funding, is that what you said? It's just not in place yet. Okay, that sounds like it. It chips in the mail. And you said it was Skittleson? And you mentioned uh uh T S P update, comp plan update, they need dovetail, chicken egg, which comes first? When's the next time we're gonna do our comp plan update?
Well, so the T S P is.
Okay, excellent.
Uh and so the adoption of the T S P is therefore.
And an update.
And which means it's then subject to all of the notice and public hearing requirements of a comprehensive plan update.
Good.
So, yeah.
And council approves it, not us.
Uh council approves it and the state has to acknowledge it.
Sure.
So the state has, I don't wanna say veto power, but the state has veto power.
You will have first shot. We 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 recommend it to council and council is the ones who actually and it puts it into law. Got it. Cool. Are there any other questions? Are there any questions? I'm sorry. I had questions so far. Are there any questions from commissioners? On the T S P? Thank you very much, Chase. That was excellent overview. Anyone? Anyone? I don't have any. I already asked mine. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chase. Okay, we're gonna move on to uh agenda item number six, Commissioner comments. Uh is there any planning commissioners that would like to speak on the record on any subject at this time? Scanning the room, scanning.
Don't scan too long, I wanna go home.
Okay, so no commissioner comments or there any staff? Staff, thank you very much. Here's a commissioner comment. Thank you very much. Uh when we had our work session a couple of weeks ago, it's like, well, we don't have any public hearings for this meeting and I thought so this is on 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 me that I asked to have this meeting and so I really appreciate this. I think that this is filling a gap that 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 we have. I think it's good optics for the planning commission to meet as regularly as possible, whether or not we As regularly as possible, whether or not we have public hearings or not. So I just want to thank staff for being here. Charlie, Tom, Chase, Ben. Wayne. We're, no, we're doing good work. We're doing good work lately and there's a lot of stuff going on in Dallas and. That is a good indication that we are. Continuing to, to grow and to thrive and I just want to really call out staff is doing an excellent job and, and thank you for doing this.
I just realized a quick question. There was something that went out an email or something that said information on the housing. Thing that we've been trying to avoid desperately. I didn't look at it because I didn't know if that was something.
Well.
That would disqualify me. Yeah.
Yeah, the status of it is they've indicated that they may be filing. For what we call a supersiting, the supersiting process, which bypasses the land use process. If that is the case, then number one, there won't be any planning commission role and number two, you can talk about. As freely as anybody else in the city. Until right now, they have not filed an application, so we're still advising that we be cautious and consider that they may file yet. A land use application, so we want to continue to be discreet in how we entertain conversations and reading materials about it.
So that thing that went out from the city was something that I could have read or should not.
I didn't see it, yeah.
I would imagine if we issued it, it's a.
It would have been a process, would have been announcement about process and not about.
I didn't even want to open it, you know, because I've been instructed.
That's good. Essentially the disclaimer that's.
Okay.
Your agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
And yeah, and so we, we don't know and they may be days away from an application. We just.
And they would have to actually have their application approved. To make it something we're not going to have to deal with, right?
No, if they file under the supersiting. Authority.
And then they're denied, then, then we don't have to deal with it either.
No, they're, an appeal. The way that the city would handle it through the action of the council last week is the statute really doesn't say how, what the process is. Now, the city would, would. Provide public notice and the council would conduct open public hearings, but the criteria is very narrow. It's not like traditional land use. Criteria. It is not a land use proceeding, so things like ex parte contacts. Those rules don't apply to the supersiting and on from a decision by the city, any appeal does not go to Luba, it goes to circuit court. Instead.
So this would be something that would go through city council and bypass the planning commission.
Yes.
It's not like it goes to some external state. Thing and we don't even get to see it.
No.
Okay.
Did they do the supersiding in West Salem?
No, I don't know. West, wait, West Salem? I don't know. Church at the Park, I think, has done. A or some. Under the supersiting authority, but I, I don't know where.
Okay, you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Charlie has a comment. Uh, we're on staff comments. Yes, staff.
So I brushed over this a little bit earlier in my calls, but I did want to remind you, so we are just getting underway. With the mill site T G M project. So that's. Sorry. Transportation Road Management Program, the ministered by. Anyway, we were awarded the grant two years ago. But it knocked over of twenty one, so we're just finally getting going on the David Evans and it's our, so. So I'll keep you updated in time, time is maybe about twelve month. Project.
Excellent.
Yes, and it's yet another thing that will. Cause. Comp plan amendment will cause changes to the transportation system plan. It has lots of ramifications. Once it gets about.
Okay, well, as things develop and as you get. You know, as it comes into focus and we have capacity on our agenda, we'd love to hear an update. Or an, oh, see, hear an overview of that. Thank you very much.
I have a question, staff. So we're talking a lot of master planning and stuff. What about the collection system wastewater plant?
They're. One or two years will see them come into the.
They're kind of old, aren't they? Yeah. Ninety eight, wasn't? Yeah.
No, ninety six.
Oh. Yeah. It's been a while since I read it, but yeah.
Okay. Any other staff comments?
So at the beginning of the meeting, we heard public comments. Was there any stat, planning commissioner commentary on the? Public comment that we got?
No.
Captain. All right.
Wait a minute, you mean, you mean the guy who did the public comment?
Yes.
Sign code.
Well, I just had a question. I mean, he's taught, never mind.
You want to go home.
Yeah. I'll talk to Chase tomorrow because I can do that. Thank you for reminding me.
Don't bring up the sign code after we're ninety minutes into a meeting. Another ninety minutes like that. Okay, well, before any more comments get invented, I. I am going to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, at.
Eight thirty six.
Eight thirty six P M. Thank you very much. I don't think this wasted our time tonight, but.
No, I don't think so either and, and while I resented it at the time, it was a good idea, John, and that's why.
I resented it fifteen minutes before I had to come down here, so.
So John, where are you going if you can share that?
What's that?